Okay, welcome everybody and I will hand it over to Councilor Morales to get us rolling tonight.
Thank you, Mary Liam. And I just wanted to tell everybody who's in attendance, thank you for taking time to attend a virtual town hall. Definitely not what we're used to. We're used to meeting at Paintswood Library or St. Peters High School. So we're still working out the kinks on the technology, but I know staff have been working hard and a couple of the other town halls went first, so we should have a pretty engaged with town hall. I want to start by just, just taking a moment of silence, just a moment to recognize everybody. The last year has just been quite something. We all have been touched by COVID in some way, whether it be Roberta Place in our community and Barry in general, family members, financial situations, lifestyle changes. It hasn't been an easier year, easier for anybody. So I know it's been said before, but I just wanted to emphasize that this truly has been impactful on the community. And you know, you're, you're definitely not alone and the city. We are looking forward to a time where we can normalize things and go back to as much of a normal as we can. So definitely something I wanted to acknowledge at first. In that year, we have taken steps throughout, whether it be our budget or throughout the year, at doing what we can to ease the pain, if you will, for residents, whether it be for water billing and some initiatives that have already occurred and some initiatives that Mayor Lehman is championing, or with the budget that we came in at the lowest tax increase. In quite, I think 15 plus years, the city portion actually having been negative, the city portion actually went down. Your overall net build did go up 0.92%, but the overall city portion was actually in the negative. We've definitely taken steps to provide these. And while we know we can't solve all the issues that we're facing, they're on a grander scale. We are doing what we can to be sensible, be understanding and make sure that we get through this difficult time. So as, as, as we've kind of gone over and I'll get, I'll kind of hand it over to Mayor Lehman in a second. This town hall is going to be very engaged. This is your town hall. So if you have questions that you've been wondering about, no matter how small, powerful on your specific street, to more broad questions on what our strategy is coming out of COVID or more budget related or more macro questions, we're here, we're here to help. If you can't answer it on the spot, we have great staff online that are documenting the question. We will get an answer and we will make sure that answer gets back to you. But this is really your time to kind of take this town hall where we can, so everybody can get something out of the time that they're so graciously dedicated to be here with us virtually. So Mayor Lehman, who wants to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilor Morales. And one of the strangest things about the last year has been the knock on effects, the, the secondary effects, if you will, of COVID. I think we've all lived through the same, you know, worries about case counts, waves in and out restrictions that were necessary and then could be eased off. And of course, we are with the finish lines in sight now. Mass vaccination in our community will begin on Monday. That doesn't mean call the health unit for an appointment because they will be working through the priority list, starting of course with the the most elderly residents in our community who are most vulnerable to COVID. I should have said off the outset, it's nice to see so many familiar names on the attendees list in this webinar. I thank you all for being here tonight. And of course, tonight is for you. So I'm only going to say a few, a few minutes of opening remarks. With, with the situation as it is with COVID, unfortunately, and I just posted my update, my video update a little while ago. We have seen our case numbers rise and that is due to the variant that's in our community. Our medical officer of health is recommending to the province that we do move to a higher level of restrictions. So there will be probably more news on that in the coming days, should the province make the decision that that's necessary. And it's unfortunate, especially since we just, just moved to the red level. So we do know what it means is we got to keep up what we're doing, or we have been doing for a little while longer. So we can allow the vaccination campaign to roll out and protect enough people in our community that, that this ends. And it will end and it will end in the spring and summer months over time. But back to my first point about the secondary impacts, if, if you own a home in Barry, your home is worth about 25% more today than it was a year ago. That's astonishing. The stories out of our real estate market right now are unprecedented and frankly, so overheated that I think it's unlikely it will continue. And it's certainly, if you're renting an apartment in Barry, oh wow, not only are rents going up, but they are almost impossible to find. So what was a housing crisis before COVID is now a red hot housing crisis. And so one of council's areas of major focus in the, in the year to come, as we try and recover is to bring, to try and bring some normalcy to the housing market. But that's why you're seeing council approve so many large residential developments, especially the apartment buildings in the city core. Because we know what is needed for affordability is rental apartments. And because of the rise in prices now, there are a lot more people who want to build those buildings in Barry, which is actually a very good thing and ultimately can be a very good thing for our downtown core with more people living there. There are so many other aspects of, of this very bizarre year that I could talk about, but I think specific toward nine and this part of the city. You know, the, the development of the new communities in the annexed lands will begin really in earnest in the spring. And we were committed to trying to do things much differently this time with this round of new suburban expansion in Barry. First of all, we want neighborhoods with, with a much broader mix of housing. We want to park within a five minute walk of every home in the annexed lands. And we want to build the services at the same time that the neighborhoods go in. Now, interestingly, despite the red hot residential real estate market, developments actually occurred slower than we planned. So some of the things that you may have been waiting for or wondering about, such as the Hewitt's rec center actually slowed down a little because of the pace of development. But I'm very excited that we are moving into planning and in some cases property acquisition for some of these pieces. And of course, other critical bits of South End infrastructure like the new bridge over Highway 400 from Big Bay Point Road to Harvey Road will open in a matter of months in, once the weather warms up and the contractor is able to finish the final touches on the bridge. So there's a lot to come. There's a lot of exciting developments that I think will be part of the recovery from COVID. It feels like tough, it is a tough time. Everybody's tired of restrictions. Everybody's frustrated by the changes we've had to make in our lives. And if you run a business that's been affected by COVID, this has maybe been the worst year in business for you. While the city doesn't have the deep pockets to provide things like wage subsidies and rent subsidies, we can connect you to some of those funds if there are people on the call who are concerned about businesses and business supports. But more importantly, our staff have been trying to work hard to to make changes and introduce programs that can help businesses build capacity, not just to sell online or, or work, you know, curbside or otherwise during COVID, but actually to succeed after COVID as well. And a good example of that is Digital Main Street. Where you've had 300 businesses from Barry take advantage of that program, which helps a small business grow its online sales. Anyway, so much I could talk about. I should mention though, just before we open the floor to questions, because that's after all the purpose of tonight. We have on the call tonight, the Chief Administrative Officer of the City of Barry, Michael Prowse, who has done unbelievable yeoman's work, both from his living room and primarily from a, in emergency operations footing at City Hall to manage the twists and turns of COVID on a municipality of 150,000 people and 60 different services and Michael leading an executive team who, who have navigated us well through this difficult time. And Lauren Wild and Nina Brancaccio from my office. Now, if there's a question you have tonight that we can't answer, please give your contact details to Lauren. It was her email in the invite that you use to register. And she will be able to help get information to you after tonight's meeting. If Serge and I can't answer your question tonight. So I think I speak for Sergio as well. We're delighted to have so many of you here. And I'll stop talking now because tonight is for you and we hope to be able to answer your questions over the next 45 minutes to an hour. So with that, Lauren will direct traffic on questions and I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you kindly, Mary Lehman. Welcome everyone. If you would like to ask a question, please feel free to raise your hand. Or you can enter your question through the Q and A box located at the bottom of your screen and be happy to read it out on your behalf. Our first question up is a pre-submitted question that I'm sure a couple of people would be interested in. I live on a residential street and would like to see the plow come by my house more often. There's been times in this winter where the plow has done a great job, but there've been more than a few times where the road conditions were poor. How can we help get additional services?
Oh, Serge, you're on mute. And while you unmute, I'll just ask if you were interested in having Austin Plowers come by or Dale Plower check?
Yes, the naming of the plows, the little, the little wins we have to find during COVID. I appreciate the question. We have had a odd couple of seasons for snow plowing. Couple of seasons ago, we had very minimal snow. Then there's been a couple of other seasons where we've had a lot of snow. So residents, I, I can understand some saying the, the service was stellar at one time and now it's getting a little bit tricky. City council is really struggling with this. And what I mean by that is if we want to increase snow plowing specifically on the residential street that you mentioned, which I'm going to just assume from the information is more of a side street, more of a, more of a Raymond Crescent, more of a, of Irene Drive, those kinds of streets. Those are not plowed at the same time as primary roads. Mapleview Drive, and I see at least one of our residents on Mapleview Drive is on the call, those will always be plowed first. That is how the city functions. I can understand the frustration for residents because a lot of Ward Nine residents are commuters. They need to get out in the morning. They need to go about their lives. But the city is definitely needing to balance between targeting those main streets and also the residential streets. The impact it would have for us to increase our service to those secondary streets is in the millions of dollars. And I know we looked at, we started looking at it last year, but with the impact of COVID and the way some of our, you know, we get a lot of money from our taxes. But if people stop paying their taxes or pay them late, or our revenues from transit from the rec centers, a lot of those went to zero or near zero. So there was definitely a bit of pullback on some surveys expansion for side streets. However, that said, if there's a specific issue, such as you're on a corner, you're getting trapped in, it's not a perfect solution. And I don't want to promise a perfect solution for everybody, but I have had residents who would contact me about a specific route, about a specific issue. And I've done my best to talk with the director of, of, of roads. And we can talk to the plow driver individually, because sometimes they might not even know that a certain, the way they angle the truck or something they're doing can be an easy fix. And I've had people, the success stories have been, you know, elderly couples have said, whatever you told the driver to do, or whoever told the driver to do something, it made a night and day difference for them. So again, I want to emphasize this is not a perfect guarantee solution for everybody, but definitely reach out. We can look at your situation individually and hopefully make, you know, make your, make your driveway more accessible. Mary Lehman, do you want to jump in?
Thanks, Sergio. Yeah, the standard for side streets is eight centimeters of snow. I believe it's eight centimeters, three inches. And that hasn't changed, but there are lots of people who would like us to have a bare pavement standard, which is the, the standard for arterial roads. Council Morales is right. The arterial roads and the transit routes do get more attention than your side street, which gets done in the middle of the night typically as part of a fixed route. And, and Sergio is absolutely right. It's a, it's, it's a cost issue. We could do a higher level of service, but the, the cost for that particular service is very, very expensive. Mostly because you need a bigger fleet and, you know, we drive our trucks to the max. Our drivers often timeout in terms of the number of hours they're allowed to drive during a heavy snow event. And then, but the issue is also literally the number of trucks for the number of routes in the city. And as the city grows, we're going to have to service the, the growing areas too. So short answer is it's a cost issue and council's choice right now is to maintain the same standard.
Thank you so much, Mary Lehman. We have Shane up with a question. Shane, I'm going to join you in if you can unmute yourself.
Hi there. Can you hear me there? Hi there, hi there gentlemen. First off, just wanted to say a quick thanks to both of you and the council. As you both alluded to, this has been quite a year. And I know as a resident now for almost 20 years in Barry, I've been very impressed at the overall leadership and direction of not just council, but the city through COVID. So I just wanted to, to start off my question with that, that comment of thanks to both of you. The question that I've got is in a perfect world, we have no COVID tomorrow. What's the, the initial plan for the city in response as, as we are getting close to that end of the tunnel? What does that sort of next steps look like to try to normalize the sort of city operations?
City operations? You mean in terms of the city services ourselves?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if, if COVID were to disappear, you know, sort of do a Donald Trump and what was it? He did one of these and just magically disappear. I mean, if it, if it disappeared in a very short period of time, then, you know, I think what we would, we would be doing is bringing all of our, our, our fleet back on stream, probably in reverse order in terms of the, the shutdown. And by which I would mean you'd see, you know, rec centers and transit service that has been reduced, probably move back to close to full speed. First, followed by things like the senior centers, which have remained closed since March of 2020. And then probably last congregate things like, you know, the theater and outdoor, major outdoor, you know, big crowd type events. Some of it, you know, we, we were able to get close to a normal pace of activity and Michael Prowse knows this far better than your mayor. But my understanding is we got pretty close to a normal pace of activity last summer. Not that there was anything normal about last summer, but in terms of city services, there wasn't a lot that was different. We were still a little bit reduced on transit and we certainly had the senior centers closed and, and the theaters closed. But most of the rest of the services were, were open in a modified format or open. And I think we just, you know, bring the staff back and reverse that. One of the biggest questions to us right now is what kind of a summer we're going to be able to offer in terms of city programs and programming, because you know, we tried to do a bit of day camps late last year. We have 6,000 kids go to day camps run by the city of Barry in a typical summer. And last year it was only a few hundred. So that's a big question, Shane. Will we be able to do that later this year? But I don't know if that answers your question, but in a perfect world, I think, you know, Mike, Mike and the executive team at the city have demonstrated their ability to pivot really quickly, because we've had to, you know, open and close facilities as the province decides to move us into different levels of the framework. So I don't know if I've answered your question.
No, that's, that's great. And I don't want to interrupt Council Morales. Is there any consideration as far as the city is making in changing now that people have almost normalized some of the working from home? Is, is there some thought that, that that would continue for city staff? When those sort of normal times would return?
Yeah, I'm going to let Michael answer that. I think yes is the short answer. But perhaps not as much as you, you might think, because so many of the tasks that city staff do are technical enough in nature that they, it's, it's easier to do them at a fixed work location. But Mike, do you want to speak to that? Michael Prowse?
Sure. Thanks, Mary Lehman. Thanks for the question, Shane. I, I think like all large organizations, we are, we are looking at that. We are analyzing that. We have had to make our staff mostly work from home that used to work in a office. Keeping in mind that about half of our staff still have to show up for work every single day. Because the type of work that they do doesn't allow them to work remotely. So we, we certainly have a mixed bag, but we are looking at the, the productivity of the work from home, what that looks like. And certainly that will inform our decisions over the next few years on what our workforce looks like and where they work from. Hopefully that helps.
That's great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Smith, I was just going to clarify, jump add to what Mayor Lehman said. One of the feedback I got during COVID of, of service that was pulled back, that hopefully is ramped up, ramped up. And we are definitely making a priority of spring and summer come forward is the basic stuff. It's the stuff you see more visibly, the lawn cutting, the maintenance of our city properties, parks, that really took a backseat. And that's just a product of COVID. There's no one really specifically to blame, but you know, everybody remembers that March Friday 13th, when the world just collapsed and everything froze. And a lot of that really took people off guard. You know, I remember CEO Price was saying, normally they set out quarterly plans, maybe monthly plans. COVID at that point was impact impacting us that it was daily plans, if not hourly plans. So in terms of hiring, I know that hiring took a backseat or seasonal hiring for some of the lawn cutting and some of the other maintenance that people very visibly noticed that at Catherine Park and other areas of Ward Nine in the city. So we are trying to make sure, as Mayor Lehman spoke to the camps, but we're trying to make sure that some of the more, you know, meat and potato services, if you will, if we do have a third wave, or even if we don't, that we are properly prepared. So we're properly staffed and that for those staff that we do bring in, or we, we, we allocate to that service are also properly protected and able to do their jobs. So that's another priority that is very visible when people think of post-COVID.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. So we have a question from our Q and A. You've mentioned the extreme rise in housing costs and the topic of development as well. My question concern is will there be some type of regulation on pricing for new housing developments? Reflective of this COVID hot, a hot COVID market, it will inflate the prices of these new homes. However, the likelihood of current housing prices is to level out. Level out is high. So wondering if there's some regulation that can take place.
Yeah, we can't, is the short version. And as Paul is known of the power to regulate housing prices, the only way we can affect the price of housing is frankly, by increasing supply. You know, when you've got 10,000 people chasing 100 active listings, it's no wonder that the, you know, houses are going for 200 over asking. When there's 100 people chasing 1,000 active listings, they go for well under listing price. That's partly a function of how many homes are available in our city, but we don't want to just build 10,000 new homes to open the doors wide because prices are rising. So if you're looking to government to regulate the price of new housing, actually regulate it, only the province can do that. You saw the wind government do that about three years ago and the federal government sometimes does it by trying to cool off the mortgage market. You know, cheap money is what fuels a lot of the rise in housing prices and certainly money right now. Mortgages are about as cheap as they get. So the federal government is under some pressure to tighten mortgage rules to cool off the market. They, the Harper government did that. The Trudeau government's done that. Governments of both colors have done that. But in terms of housing prices in Barry, we are really at the whim of the market.
I'll jump in there. While the government, other levels of government can regulate financing, mortgage costs, that does tend to sometimes have a negative effect on consumers. So by that I mean you existing homeowners who are renewing your mortgages or refinancing because you need to move, move some debt around. It also has the impact on first time homeowners. So it's not necessarily a good thing. It can cool off the market, but it can also affect and trickle down to consumer debt, more specifically at the city. While we can't regulate home prices, there is something we can do and it's we can build more, as was alluded to by the mayor. But we can build more and make it almost easier to move more without caving in, without necessarily just giving developers a free pass. And what I mean by that is intensification projects. I remember I've got this weird, semi-photographed memory, having a great chat with Mayor Lehman. I think it was 2016 where we had that economics chat. The solution is to build more, but you don't just build more of dense units. You don't just build more condos and more towns. You still build more single attached housing. Because all of a sudden, if you stop building single detached housing and you just focus on more dense types, it's going to push that single attached housing through the roof. So the answer, and he gave me a really good explanation. I almost felt I was a throwback to your professor days mayor. It was really insightful that again, the short version is build more of all the asset classes without putting too much emphasis on one. As everybody can see at the corner of Ashford and Young Street, there's a building going up. And we're excited. There's a crane in the sky. There's a good looking building. The project wasn't just an idea. There was financing and there's a building going up. The sales are, 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 are through, if not done. And that kind of project, while it's only 100 and something units, it can have an impact on the market, as the mayor said, if there, because there now might be a couple of hundred more listings and it cools off the market. Other areas of the city and even down further on Young Street by the church and the Barry Burger, there's a proposal to do another project there. Those projects do make a significant difference. For example, the subdivisions in phase two of the annexed lands in Ward Nine and even face three more into Ward 10, those are already more or less, at least the face two one is approved. So those will be built out in phases over the years, but it's also important to get density along the, specifically along areas where we can. And obviously we have the delicate balance of, you know, letting smart growth happen, which is what I've been saying for over six years, but at the same time, not giving a free pass and not letting it impact negatively. And again, I know some of you or there at least one resident lives on one of these major roads and it's not easy when you bought your house 30, 20 years ago on a two lane road. And you're not dealing just with the traffic of construction right now, but you're dealing with the almost redesign of the entire area. So it's not an easy job that we have, but what we can do on our end is allow sustainable smart growth to occur. And that way add more supply. And it's so Barry doesn't become this city where growth doesn't happen. And one specific example I want to point out is the rental building beside Paintswood Library. Now, I know that not everybody supported that and you may or may not be on the call. But that was one of the first rental buildings, like purpose-built rental that was approved in the city, hasn't been built yet, with the exception of the Watercrest, but that's luxury and water front. So I'm going to put an asterisk on that. In a very long time, one of the first purpose-built, there's now one being built off Hammer Street in the north end. And that's significant. And what I want to speak to that is historically Barry, I'm not assigning it to anybody in general or any council. Historically Barry has been anti-density. You know, the classic, we want that, just not here. And that's why you see Barry, one of the factors, I'm not an economist, but one of the reasons you have high rents. You don't have purpose-built rental housing, like tall buildings. So it, the market kind of had to find itself in illegal second suites or in legalized second suites. So one of the ways we are helping is that building at 74 Dean will eventually help. The one on Hammer Street will help. The one that we, hasn't been ratified at council yet, but tentatively approved that planning committee on Bayfield and Sophia will help, especially with the affordable housing segment. So adding inventory and adding supply while still being responsible about integrating to the neighborhood is the, the main thing, if not the only thing that we can do with the council.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Counselor. I have Clayton up. Who would like to chat? So just going to join you into the conversation. Clayton, can you unmute yourself?
Mr. King, nice to see you or hear you or both. You're still on mute, at least so we can't hear you. I'm not sure if that's on your end.
Oh, can you hear me?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that. I thought I hit unmute the first time. Well, thank you very much for taking my question. As I see you too, Mayor and as well, Council Morales. I had a couple of questions, maybe I'll just ask, ask the first question first and see what kind of answer I can get and then the second after that. Regarding where I live here and on Mapleview Drive, it's a condominium. And for years, the, the people who live in this condominium have had to pay their condo fees each year for service deliveries like garbage pickup and recycling. Since condo was created in 2004, a lot of questions I get asked as being on the board for the condo is what kind of offsets or what kind of decisions has the city made in the past regarding condominiums? And the kind of the double payment that they have within their city taxes and paying for that service where, where it doesn't seem to work within the condominium sector, where they can't take their garbage out to the side road. They can't take their green bins or recycling and won't get picked up. Where the condos are forced to have to, to pay that extra each year to have that separate service. So I'm not too sure. I just wanted to have some answers for, for some of our 40 units in this, in this condominium.
So thanks for the question. In 2015, city council did recognize that that was unfair that you, that many condo owners. I mean, what we were basically telling condos was, well, you get curbside pickup if you want it. So if you, if you want to have a bin and tip the bins, that's a higher level of service and we weren't willing to provide it. So you had to contract it privately. Problem with that is condo development, doing curbside all in one location looks like a 500 bag pile of garbage and, and nobody wants that. Believe it or not, we had one apartment building in Barry that used to do that. And it was awful on Peel Street. Anyway, long story short, Clayton, we started a pilot program four years ago to start collecting from condos using front end bin tipping. And we will connect you to our staff on the, so that on behalf of your board, you guys can get dialed into that pilot project.
That sounds great. The second question I had was regarding the wetlands along Lover's Creek from Mapleview Drive all the way to, well, it extends right to the bay pretty much, but within the ward. I noticed that prac construction is starting to develop or they're serving down along that sector between Country Lane and Huronia Drive. Now, I don't know, I haven't been up to date within any of the phases that are, are, have been planned and are going to be implemented in the future. I'm just kind of concerned and you know, I mean, I've been here for 10 years coming this fall. And at that time period, my son was one years old, one year old, and I have another son too as well. And many times I've taken him for walks along that creek and in the past, and many people in the, in the area utilize those woods just to kind of get away. So I'm just concerned, you know, I mean, in terms of new construction and so forth, what, what is going to be done to protect those the wetlands there and the many different animals and species of life that live along that, that creek?
Sergio, unmute.
Perfect. Thank you. That's a great question, Mr. King. I'll start with what kind of what we've done and then kind of go to where we, where we're going to go with that development of those subdivisions. So one of the priorities and one of the reasons the reconstruction and widening of Mapleview Drive East took so long at Country Lane, one of the reasons it took so long would be in 2017 is we had to make sure that we were abiding by the conservation authorities with that creek. Lever's Creek made it a whole different project. We had multiple shutdowns where we just flat it close to the road and we didn't have those delays as we moved east of Country Lane. So to answer that, we've made sure Lever's Creek was a priority. We have, I forget the technical term, but that's black fencing. It looks like cloth. When you're doing work, it prevents the sediment and contamination of creeks as well. So that has also been made a priority throughout. And as we move forward, I also have some very, like you, who uses the the walking trails, I have some very engaged residents who back on the country lane around like the beginning of Mapleview. And sometimes a deer or a buck has hopped into the fence. I know there's an enclosed area got trapped. They're, they're on it. They're emailing me. They're calling me. The city shows up and assists with the wildlife or some other people are maybe interacting with wildlife in a negative way. So we're doing those little measures. As we developed phase two and of subdivisions south of Mapleviews or as the applicant develops them, I know that one of the big points that they made in their presentation was I believe 30 or 30 plus percent of the land of their total land was going to become EP or untouched. And there's some really good images if you want, I can connect you with from the PowerPoint. But essentially, are they developing it? Yes. No, they're not pretending to be saints and leaving it alone. But what they're doing is they're incorporating areas of their land and that includes creeks. That includes the, some of the wetland and that includes some of the areas of mass where there's lots of trees that are healthy and they're designated at EP and they're actually going to be handing it over essentially to the municipality to protect it from future developments or anything of that sort. So the overall goal, and I think Mary Lee, we could help me out with this is through some of this development that some people might have concerns that, oh, more development, will that hurt the walking trails or the creek? It's, we've done it in a way and we worked with the applicants where it's actually going to enhance it. So previously that land was kind of just farmland, not really touched, kind of just brushed. It's going to be curated, it's going to be environmentally protected. It's now going to be maintained to a degree. And it's going to be incorporated. And I know that there's areas where Lever's Creek isn't exactly, doesn't exactly flow continuously. And we're doing our best and it's not going to happen in one year, but we're doing our best to connect those walking paths and connect those areas. So we have an integrated pathway all the way to Kempin Feld Bay through the Lever's Creek network. So that is I think what's kind of coming up on the radar, but Mary Lee, but you might know a bit more details on that.
I think that you provided lots of detail there, Sergio. And I, I guess, Clayton, the only other thing I'd add is like, there's, there's some lands that have never been developed in Barry that are, are going to get built out because the city is growing so fast and we want to grow inside the city and not just on the edges. But whenever it's near a water course, we do try and protect the water course and protect some natural areas. So that's how we've ended up with the Bunkers Creek Eco Park and the Bear Creek Eco Park. And I mean, you're going to see more of that kind of thing as the city, city builds out to the south.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to know what kind of plans were made for Lover's Creek. If it's going to be something along those lines in the future, because once they start, start building and construction and and tearing down the trees, you know, I mean, there's a lot of wildlife that, that live in that section, in that corridor, even across Mapleview two as well. There's coyotes, there's, there's deer, there's muskrats, there's beaver, there's waterfowl. There's, there's a lot of stuff that could be pushed out due to the construction. But I just want to see some sort of plan and protection, like you said, in terms of Bear Creek and others a lot within the city. And when whatever is accessible online or through email.
Yep, we got lots of material online, so do get in touch and we'll, we'll send you some links.
Okay, McGwich.
Okay, McGwich.
Thanks so much. We have a question in from an audience member. As an avid walker and parent of two children in an elementary school, I am concerned about dangerous driving within our neighborhood. At the intersection of Grace and Raquel, there's a four way stop, yet on a daily basis, when I walk my children to school, I observe people rolling through this intersection at a considerable rate of speed as they head towards Dean. Wondering what can be done to maintain safety at this intersection, such as a formal crosswalk or something of the nature could be considered.
Yeah, go ahead, Sergio, because I know you got a history with this one. We'll chime in when you're done.
Yeah, no, it's trying to keep the balance between back and forth. Um, road safety, it's tough. The thing about a formalized crosswalk, and again, I, I'm always very direct. I like to be blunt and I talked over with staff because I have the feedback, please get a stoplights, not here, not here, but at Country Lane and Madeline. Get a stoplights, let, you know, let's get some police presence, which we are, and it rotates. The thing about a formalized crosswalk is it gives a false sense of security because as somebody who is law abiding or just aware, whether it be your children, other people's children, yourselves, okay, a formalized crosswalk, I shouldn't have to check 17 times before crossing a formalized crosswalk. So that false sense of security actually has the effect, and this is backed by data of working negatively against safety. I'm not saying we're purposely keeping it, you know, where it is so people are more alert. But that is not necessarily a perfect solution. We've also looked at a stop, stoplight. Stoplights are very expensive. We're talking six figures. And once you have a stoplight, what our city data, not just abstract data from a city far away, what our data has found is a stoplight can also be sometimes worse for street safety than a stop sign, because in a stop sign, you intuitively have to stop all four ways. If there's one on both sides and then you go with a stoplight. The kind of person that's speeding, especially on Raquel coming from Dean, you know, going through the curve, checking their cell phone, really not reducing their speed. They're the kind of person that's going to see a green, a long green or a yellow and say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna gun it. Which there's no point because you're going to get to Esther at the same time. So that one is also very tricky. And this is a tough conversation I have because when I finished the conversation with residents, it's almost like, okay, I get where you're coming from, but so what's the solution? The solution is definitely more police presence and we have kind of piloted or moved forward the community policing initiative as of last year. So we, we're seeing more police cruisers. We're also seeing police cruisers and I know there's some residents that are tired of hearing the cars with the modified mufflers race down on Young Street at all hours of the day, even Madeline. So we kind of worked hard on that over the summer. But this intersection is a great location for permanent speed reduction. And again, the mayor might provide more detail, but we had some success on Sandringham and Ward 10 and other locations. And by permanent speed reduction is, I don't mean the speed bumps that we try to put at Raquel almost every year. There's a couple where we didn't. I mean, the whole road gets redesigned and the issue with Raquel is you've got a wide road, which is backwards planning from the early 2000s, but that is what it is. So we're actually reducing the width of the road and we're bringing out the curbs. We're bringing out the, the grass essentially, and it becomes more of a skinny road. So if anybody has ever been in midtown Toronto, like, like Edlington area, like the really fancy neighborhoods where the roads feel skinnier. So you, the data has shown that you drive slower when the roads are not as wide, which reduces speed. So by doing a redesign of roads, again, it worked and even having permanent speed bumps that are not the plastic ones. The data has shown that it works. So we've gone past the pilot. We've talked for years that we're looking into it. And we're actually, it's just about finding money in upcoming budgets and going to different areas. And the two areas I would identify in Ward nine that are good candidates for this are Raquel, right around the stretch you discussed. And Moon Avenue, which would be south of Chalmers, leading up to leading up to Widgeon, Widgeon Road by the mailboxes would be good candidates for that.
Yeah, the only other thing I guess I'd chime in, the short term answers is park a cruiser in the second driveway up from the intersection and we can ask the traffic unit to do that. They'll keep stats, both on how fast people are going and how many times they ignore the sign, go through the stop sign. The long-term answer, I think Sergio is quite right. It's a raised intersection is the form of traffic, permanent traffic calming that we're building in the city of Barry now. And that's where you literally bump up to go into the intersection and bump down. It's very effective. It looks a lot better and it will, it will stop some of the speeding activity for sure.
Thank you kindly to you both. We have another submitted question. What are the plans for the corner of Madeline and Young on the southwest side? It seems to be, seems to be abandoned for quite some time.
Yeah, so that Sergio, again, I think because you tend to have all the details of the development plans in your head, this, that was the extension of the commercial. The, the sort of big box plaza that Scotty's and Dollar Store and Marvel, you know, all the, all the stores, there was an extension of the commercial area. There, there is a revised development plan, which is residential. But to tell you the truth, I am not up to speed on this, on the status of that application. Sergio, are you?
Thanks, Mary Lehman. As far as I know, it's no secret, Armel owns that property. Armel is a company that developed a great majority of the houses that you guys, that everybody lives in. They build to for tenants. So they don't build first and put brown bags or brown, you know, newspapers and bring tenants in. They will find a tenant, say, we will build out for you. So that's your approach. I know a lot of people were excited that maybe a Tim Hortons was going to go in there. That never happened. But yes, as the mayor said, there are talks of residential that is complementary to both Young Station, the condos and also the seniors housing behind, which is great. We need more housing. Again, we need all types of housing, whether it be normal condos or possibly senior catered or even senior non-assisted, which is what I mean by catered or actually assisted. But there is no specific details as to if they've landed a, a partner for that or what it's going to look like at this stage. Again, the mayor hasn't heard of it. I'm scanning my semi photographic memory and I haven't got updates. But I guess that what I can say is that the feedback we've gotten over the years is Barry has a lot of commercial. And this would be a prime area to put some residential as appropriate in that corridor. We already have the grocery store. We have some services. Mapleview, the widening will finally go all the way to Young Street in the next two years. And also seniors need to find affordable places to, if they want to stay in Barry, they, they should be able to find affordable places to live. So the trick with that one is making sure it's, it's again, the buzzword, smart, sustainable growth, that it's mixed use, that it has, it's properly designed to the road, that the angle and the shadowing to the neighboring areas work well and that the buildings are pushed up to the road as much as possible. So that's kind of where we can affect it in that stage. But once we do have more updates, there will have to be a formal zoning process, Mayor Lehman, so that there will be giant sign on the property and we will go through the process and anybody interested can engage to the process, give their feedback and hopefully welcome something that adds to that Ward nine.
Now, it's a perfect location for seniors oriented housing. You get a grocery store, drugstore, you know, local retail, even a library all next door. It's on a major transit corridor. And, and there's seniors housing next door to it on one side and apartments on the other side. So it, that does make a lot of sense. Nobody's building bricks and mortar commercial retail right now. That's for sure. If, if we thought online shopping was growing before COVID, I think the last year has brought a crashing halt to just about any construction of retail anywhere in, in North America. And there's a lot of people betting that that will be the case going forward, which probably for Barry is not a terrible thing. Not that online shopping is a better thing, just that I think we've probably got enough retail in the mix already.
Thanks so much. And further to that question, just about future commercial development at the southeast corner of Mapleview in Huronia, currently the site of Cedar Link Golf Center. Is there any information or comment on that?
Um, yeah, you want me to go first? Okay.
Go first.
I, I tried. So that site, obviously it's been discussed, yeah. I don't mince words. So that site obviously had been interest for over six years. The people that own that site have wanted to do something with it. And I know there was a talk maybe two years ago that that's it. That was going to be the last season for the golf range. The plan that came to me that was brought forward by the owners is they wanted to do retail commercial. They've wanted to definitely protect a bit of the environmental buffer near the south and east perimeter around the property. And one of the big things they wanted to do was get a grocery store in there. And specifically, again, that's the thing. Sometimes applicants can over promise and say, we'll get you a cheaper, a cheaper grocery store, a more economically grocery store. And I was ecstatic and the kind of people that do the discussions about this were ecstatic because people in Southeast Barry know there's theirs, which nothing against theirs, but the prices are very different than other residents of the city who have food basics in the southwest, no frills in the northeast and center Barry and Fresh Co. in north, northwest. So variety and options would have been a win-win for for this corner. The thing about this corner is they also wanted to incorporate residential. Again, would have been senior tailored, could have been for everybody, but senior tailored and they wanted to put that density there. The problem with this property was it wasn't, as it stood, it wasn't conducive for that kind of build. It had the direction of, of the policy had more of a, an industrial vision for it. So I went to council, I advocated for the benefits of doing this instead of letting it go industrial, which also has its benefits. Industrial brings high paying jobs to the area. The counter to that is I personally feel that that area, industrial, it's not appropriate for that corner. It might be appropriate down Saunders, more south, or it might be appropriate on the west side of Mapleview. But that area, that new vision would have been more complimentary. Unfortunately, the vote to add it to the list for conversion did not go through. So the applicants kind of went back to the drawing board and they had, had a conversation with a major grocer. And it hasn't, I haven't really gotten updates on that, but we're still in a holding pattern and the applicant can still go through the normal zoning process, just because they didn't get added to the list of conversion, which think of it of a priority lane. You still have to go through proper public process, but they would have been on that list. They can still go through the normal process, so it's not stopping them, but it definitely, I would say, put some setbacks on the plan. So once again, if and when there's a formal application, not just discussions, it will be public. We will have many meetings and we can engage residents, but that's kind of the feedback on, I would say, the last six years on that site.
Okay, as it is about 10 to eight, you know, we, I often like to finish these town halls with what we call a speed round, which is where we try and do 30 second questions and 30 second answers and get to as many more of the questions that have been submitted or people waiting. So Lauren, I don't know if there's somebody waiting to ask a question in person. If not, if you want to go ahead quickly with some of the questions in the Q and A, maybe Sergio and I can give some really quick answers.
I'd be happy to. We have one, one raised hand from Shane, but I'm gonna just sneak a question in before we get back to you, Shane. If that's okay, Mapleview, Mapleview East widening, when is that slated to start?
Spring.
There you go.
Basically. Spring and completion by, by 2022.
How about the Hewitt's Rec Center? What's the approximate timeline for that construction and project?
Mike may have to correct me, but I believe start of construction 2024 completion would be like 26. But I'm guessing that may have even moved back a bit. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mary Lee. But I was just going to say, I think that was the original timeline. Development has been a little bit slower, so you might see that back another year or two, but I think the placeholder is currently for 2024. You're correct.
Awesome.
Sorry. I was just saying that's due to the development slowdown that we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
Sorry about that councillor. And wanting to know about schools for the Huronia Lockhart neighborhood, has there been any information from the school board about possible schools there?
There is a school coming there. I believe it is quite a bit later in the school board's timeline. And it's not in the Huronia Lockhart neighborhood, of course, itself. It's further east along Lockhart, but it is in the secondary plan. And I forgot, and Sergio, do you remember where the school site is? It's, it's not too far east of that community. Go ahead.
It's right east of Country Club Estates in that.
It is right.
A bit ago. Yeah.
There you go.
There's at least one.
Yeah, my, my memory is the school board's timeline for that is closer to five years before they're starting construction. And it might even be later than that, but please give us your contact details and we will find out from them when they were going to start building that school.
Thanks so much. I have a comment here, not wanting development around Moon Avenue because of the, the wetlands in that area and a desire for that to be protected. I have a comment here, not wanting development around Loon Avenue because of the, the wetlands in that area and a desire for that to be protected.
Yeah, we've heard a lot about this one. I will simply say that when that one comes back to council, I expect there will be significant changes or efforts to address all of the concerns. There were a lot of concerns expressed about the impact on the wetlands and the amount of development being crammed into that very narrow property. But it hasn't come back to council yet. So again, notify the clerk's office, you can email cityclerks, all one word, at berry.ca. And that'll make sure you get notified when that planning application is coming to council, so you can find out what's been done and what we're doing about it.
Only thing I'll add is, what, because it has faced such significant changes, that's one of the reasons it's taken so long. So a lot of residents went, it was all, it was really in everybody's faces, everybody stressed out, and then it went radio silence. That's almost a good thing at the amount of engagement. So sometimes files go away for a couple of months and come back, or not come back at all because of feedback like that, and this is one of those spots.
A quick question, any commercial going beside the go, or is it just residential?
There's a little bit of convenience commercial in the ground floor of the six-story apartment buildings that will face the station to the north. So as you drive in from the traffic light off, Young on your left will be four and six-story apartment buildings. And they have ground floor commercials. So expect stuff like coffee shop, dry cleaner, convenience store, that sort of thing. Have I got that right, Serge? I think that's right, huh? In Armel?
Correct, cor- correct, but part of the phasing, unless it's changed, and I missed it, that, that phasing of those buildings won't be for quite a while. It's going to be the semis that are back-to-back towns first, and those buildings will be left further down for now.
Wonderful. A quick question, any information of when are we going to find more information out about vaccines?
Well, tomorrow is the short answer. The Public Health Unit will be releasing tomorrow the, both the mass vaccination plan for the coming months, and also what the next tier of the priority list, how to get seniors over eighty signed up to be vaccinated, and how they will be contacted and, and brought in for vaccination. The city is contributing some of our facilities. So you're going to see a whole lot of detail in the news tomorrow about that. The timing will, I mean, they are going to begin the next tranche of, of the population on Monday. And it's, right now, that plan is geared to only Pfizer and Moderna being supplied in the numbers that the feds are telling us. But of course, there's three other vaccines that we're likely to get in March or April. And even if we only got one of them, it would accelerate the timeframe. So I know you, you probably saw in the news today, General Hillier rolling out dates by which people of different ages might expect to be vaccinated. You know, that, given the interruption with supply, I'm not surprised that they're being fairly conservative about those dates. I would hope, and I would expect, if we see more vaccines approved and delivered, then certainly the distribution, which is the job of local public health organized by the province, that can go faster. So I'm still hopeful it's going to go faster than what we heard today. But you'll hear about all the local plans tomorrow from the health unit.
And, and the only thing I'll add to that is, Mayor Lehman is too humble, I'm not, he deserves some credit for the Spurling site. So the testing center for COVID, definitely, I know, Mayor Lehman, you spearheaded that. Basically, the Spurling building being our old police station that was just kind of sitting there because the police went over. I know that Mayor Lehman quickly helped cut some red tape to help that be our testing center, so that was helpful. In terms of actual vaccines, Mayor Lehman or CEO Pres, correct me if I'm wrong, we are basically at a standby and ready to use our rec centers and city facilities as appropriate for whatever rollout plan is developed by the province and fed. So basically, we know that it's coming, and some sort of mass immunization effort will be there, and we're preparing our end since we own a lot of the assets and buildings. And basically, the summary is, whatever we can do, we're going to make sure that we can help out where we can and do it appropriately and assist the rollout.
Yeah, so ju- just, just to reassure everyone, yeah, those plans have been approved by the province, they've been in development for a couple of months. It's all ready to go, and it's going to start on Monday. But I think the, the key thing is the supply of vaccine. When we, when we receive it, will dictate the pace with which we can stand up those facilities. And thanks for the shout-out about twenty-nine Spurling, Council Morales, but actually, it's Mike Gross who deserves the credit for that one, for sure. But yes, we did get that done quickly, and we've been trying to help the health unit with whatever they need as soon as they need it.
Wonderful, thank you so much. We do have one raised hand, so we'll add you to the conversation as our final question for the evening.
And I'll keep it super short. Harvey Road bypass, projected restart of construction and projected completion.
Serge, do you know, are we going to punt this one to Michael?
What was the first one? Complete, I heard completion, the first one was.
When's the bridge going to open, I think, is the, the core of the question.
When's, when's construction going to restart and when is the projected completion?
Okay, so we are restarting as soon as weather allows in the spring, and construction. I, I never like to say when construction is going to finish on a project because it always changes. So CEO Pres, do you have an updated in terms of that file from engineering?
And Council Morales, my fingers are crossed. They are telling us that we can expect the, the bridge to open in June. Again, my fingers are crossed, weather permitting, we're hoping to get traffic across that bridge in June.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we are at seven fifty-nine. Lauren, did we have any more questions?
There's one comment about silt fences that are supposed to be preventing silt into Hewitt's Creek at Mapleview, and I can certainly let staff know about that. We do have one last submitted question that tried to sneak in under the wire, so we'll get it in here. How many trees are being replaced with all of the ones that are being cut down on the annex lands?
Yeah, there's, they're inevitably, it's nowhere near full replacement. And the, the plantings in site plans often attempt to replace the number of trees. But of course, you're replacing, in some cases, mature trees with, with, with seedlings or, or, you know, young trees. So they'll take some years before they're anywhere near as beautiful as what comes down. What is protected is a full third of the annex lands. So when we did the planning for the annex lands, which took seven years, the core, instead of hanging all the plans on a road network, we hung it on the natural heritage system, which is the connected series of green spaces that form really the frame for development in the annex lands. And that includes, as Clayton was mentioning earlier, the Lover's Creek watershed, which will now, you know, which, as you extend out into the former Innisville, continues to be a green corridor that can take you all the way down to Kempin Fel Bay at, at Wilkins Beach and others. But the, the trees that will be kept are, are, you know, part of that greater-than-ever protection of, of greenlands in terms of the way that we are allowing those areas to develop. I think what shocks people usually is when they back onto a woodlot, or there's a row of trees between them and the neighboring farm or those sorts of things, and then those trees are cut. You know, that, I know that's shocking. That, that happens with each successive wave of development, unfortunately. And we do now, and I guess the last comment I'd make is, we do now require tree preservation plans of every single development, so that there is an attempt to preserve particularly what are called boundary trees. Anything that is close to or helping to define the edge between properties. So are, are there still a, a number of trees that are cut for development? Absolutely, and sometimes it can look bad and, and feel devastating. You know, I won't try and change that, that is part of the clearing land process for development. But we protect more land than we ever have, and we try to protect those really important and landmark trees, especially on the edges of properties.
And one, a couple of things I'll add to that is, these are important things of clarification, I think. Residents sometimes go, my house backs onto that farm field, I have that row of trees, technically, it's not on my property, I want to preserve as many as possible. At least in my experience, it's not always the case, but in my experiences, specifically the subdivision beside Country Club Estates, that developer wanted to go out of their way to protect, save the trees. And you don't have to trust or work for it. Like, you don't, you don't have, you can be cynical. These, the, the reason they wanted to is, if they kept those trees, and the ones they kept, it allows them to sell those lots for more money. So it's literally in their financial best interest to make more money to preserve the trees. So they're not, the, the, the approach to clear cut that might have existed in the eighties and nineties, that's gone. Number two is some of the trees, residents go, look, that one got tagged, that one's coming down. It's, it's, why are you tagging it? It's tall. That study that the mayor talked about, they actually have a professional come out, and they look at the health of the tree. So while it might seem healthy, some of those trees that get tagged are dying or will die. So they're not, it's called not salvageable. So that kind of just to clear some misconceptions. I know there's a big push, Mayor Lehman, from our colleague, Cam Guthrie out of Wealth, to do a whole bunch of tree plantation. I know there was some big buzz in early twenty-twenty. I know that got brought to Berry, we didn't fully move forward with it, there were some limitations, but we are exploring essentially how to plant as many trees as possible on city land where we can. So we are, that is on our radar. I don't remember the intricate details, but I also know, not so much in Ward 9, but in the Ward 8 area, and a bit of the Ward 1 area, we are cutting down the, that tree that gets infected by the hornet. We're cutting them down as much as we can and replacing them. Once again, the seedlings are usually not as big as the ones, but we're being proactive because we know that these trees will not survive over the years. And we want to make sure that trees grow as quickly as possible. So I know the city has been proactive in the springtime about getting the ash borer, or whatever the name of the tree is, so we can have, you know, healthy foliage.
Thank you so much, Council Morales and Mayor Lehman for that. That brings us to eight oh four this evening and concludes our questions.
Okay, I want to thank everybody again. And if there, if you had a question that you weren't able to ask or wanted to follow up information on, again, please email Lauren. Her, her email was the one that you, you got when you registered. And we will be happy to follow up. And again, thank you, everybody, for spending some time with us tonight. Please stay safe, please stay apart for now, we've got to keep this up a little while longer. But know that we are in the finish line to, we, we can see the finish line to COVID, and you're going to get some more details on how we're going to get there tomorrow. So there's hope, but we're going to have to keep it up and stay safe a little while longer to, to put this to bed, this bizarre year that we've had. Anyway, thank you all, and good night. And thank you very much again to Lauren, Nina, and Michael Pres for joining us tonight. Good night, everyone.
Take care, everybody.